I would like to call the meeting of the Board of Trustees, our corporate authority, to order at 7:04 PM. Before we start, I'm going to ask that everyone mute their devices. And with that, I will formally call the meeting to order at 7:05 PM. And I'm going to ask everyone to stand and join me as we recite the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Burns here.
Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Jones.
Here.
Trustee Sapp.
Here.
Trustee Sterling.
Here.
Trustee Dragan Wilson.
Here.
Thank you. May we have meditation by our very own Pastor John Gibbs?
Testing, testing. Please ask everyone to stand while we do this prayer. Allow me to say the names before I pray. Our home, Oliver Mayor, Barbara Campbell Pruitt, our village clerk, Ms. Williams, our trustee Burns, our trustee Johnson, our trustee Jones, our trustee Sapp, our trustee Sterling, and our trustee Winston. Bow your heads, dear Lord Jesus, we thank you, Lord, for each and everyone that is here, that is here under the sound of my voice, Lord. I pray for each and everyone in this building, Lord, that you lead them and you guide them and you protect them and you order their steps as they take one step in front of the other. Bless them and keep them for all the decisions that are made on tonight, that we can come to a good conclusion, that everything that is processed and everything that is said, that no one, no one gets upset with no one, that we all are in this together.
Yes, Lord.
To come together to help Salt Village be a great community. So, Lord, bless us, keep us, let us, give us the ingenuity and the know-how, what to say and what to do. This is my prayer, I will ask it in the name of Jesus.
Yes, Lord.
I pray. Thank God, thank God, thank God. And amen, everyone, thank you so very much.
Amen. And before our pastor takes his seat, I would like for you to join him as we congratulate him on celebrating his recent forty-four year anniversary as being a pastor in twelve, forty-two, twenty-two years of being a pastor and serving the village of Salt Village for twelve years. But, I got my, the twos and fours, except please forgive me, but we thank you, sir. Okay, moving right along, we have no executive closed session, so we're going to go with approval of minutes by our village.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to go into executive closed session.
I think that maybe if some people would consider doing the committee meeting and going forth and please let us know in advance. Thank you.
I've never known any of this, I've always known when I got up at the table.
Not after it's been closed, not after, not after you said we have no closed session.
But I correct you, Mayor.
We can do it the same night.
Okay, Mayor.
Tonight, under the committee of the whole meeting, thank you.
Mayor, I am asking, Mayor, the trustee Burns is asking for an executive closed session, Mayor.
And we will have it during the committee of the whole meeting now that I know.
So are you denying me executive closed session?
Yes, I am, yes.
May I ask you why?
Because.
Because no one has ever been denied executive closed session. And we've always asked for it when we're here. So, I've asked for an executive closed session, I need to know why you're denying me executive closed session.
Because there was not advanced notice.
There is never advanced notice, Mayor.
Yes, there is.
We have never been advanced, we always ask for an executive closed session when we can. So I call for.
What is the nature of your closed session, Mayor?
I call for motion.
No, excuse me, no. That's not appropriate and it's not proper, no.
Mayor.
We, no, you guys should do things according to parliamentary procedures. Please tell me.
Please, everyone, I'll say that. We always ask for an executive.
Why we are going into.
Because I have, I have some.
So I need to be able to state that as a motion.
Yes, we have employment and legal matters to discuss, Mayor. Thank you so much.
I'm going to defer to the trustee by asking for a motion to enter into closed session to discuss employment and legal updates or issues. I'm not certain which. May I have that motion, please?
So move.
It's been, excuse me, it's been moved by trustee Johnson, may I have a second? It's been moved and seconded. Village clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Sapp.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Dragan Wilson.
That motion carries, please, we will go into executive closed session and we will return as soon as we can. As the village clerk joins us on the day, I'm going to ask for a motion to re-condemn the board meeting.
So move.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please, I'll roll.
Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Sapp.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Dragan Wilson.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item number three, the approval of minutes. Village clerk, are we handling each one of these motions individually or back down with the same?
We are going to remove, um, I am asking to table general proceedings for the executive session of day twenty-six, twenty-five and the executive session of nine-nine, twenty-five because we do not have the time to review that executive session. We'll bring those back later.
What was that second date?
Uh, nine-nine, twenty-five. All of those will come back another day. No, no, it's the executive session because we didn't have time to review that executive session. So we're going to bring them back the next time we go on to the executive session. So I am asking that we approve items A and C and D.
The village clerk has asked that we approve the general proceedings for August twenty-sixth, the regular board meeting, uh, the general proceedings for August twenty-seventh, which is a special meeting that dealt with the budget, as well as approve the general proceedings for nine-nine, twenty-five, which was a regular board meeting. May I have that motion, please?
So move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, please, call the roll.
Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Sapp.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Dragan Wilson.
Yes, for eight-twenty-six, twenty-five, regular board meeting. Yes, for eight-twenty-seven, twenty-five, special meeting abstaining for September the ninth, twenty-twenty-five, regular board meeting.
Thank you very much. And going forward, anytime that there are all of the items as listed and we ask for a, um, to vote on them all at the same time, I'm going to ask that we do the same that clerk just did and ask the table for to ask those items to be removed so that they are not all entertained in one motion. And we just take it separately, that is according to Robert Rule of Order. We will move forward and the next item is public comment. If you have an item for a public comment, I'm going to ask that you rise now and stand in line as I read this statement. All questions and comments must be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter concerning the business of Salt Village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may not engage in debate, counter replies, or rebuttals. I will respond to questions and comments as appropriate. Again, I'm asking if you have a public comment, to step to the microphone now. To step to the microphone now. And we will hear the first comment. I think that we have one, two, three, five comments. After that, we will hear no more. Move forward, please.
I am trying to say that I have a couple of concerns and I want to second it. I see the question about on the last meeting, Madam Mayor, you made an announcement that you would be looking for a new commissioner and that would be for the police and fire commission, the zoning commission, and the advisory committee. So my question to you is, what was that process for? Seeing that most of the commissions are under a commission and has an expiration date and then it come back up for approval or so, uh, you're talking about changing amount of people that's on a commission that is already legislated? Or are you talking about removing the commission that's already in place and then making sure that bring up people? So I want to be clear that I am not surprised by the fire chief. So, if you could explain that process a little for me, that would be great. My second question is that purportedly, I'm not sure, but purportedly, we have some new commissions. We have a new fire chief, we have a new police chief, we still have our current village administrator, and we do not have in place a finance person. We do not have in place a trailer. We do not have in place a public works director. But of those three that we do have, the rumor was purportedly the salary was around a thousand dollars at least. If that is true, then my concern is we're creating those two hundred dollar companies. That if these other commissions will also be filled with a hundred dollar companies. If so, then can you please just kind of tell me what items they're coming from and not say to me today that that's the person yelling, you can't talk about it? Because I'm not talking about commission, I'm just talking about salary. So, good day, good day.
Can you please check to make sure that that mic is on before you start? Can you look at it? It's not on unless you can speak as loudly as the last commenter. No, I'm sorry, let me respond first, I keep remembering, forgetting.
Ask me.
Okay, let me respond first. The last comment asked about the process for changing commissioners. I think what I said when I announced that we would be looking at new commissioners, I asked those who would be interested to send me a notice of intent. I've not received any at that point in time. However, I would like to remind this board as well as those in the audience that commissioners and many other positions serve until the end of the previous administrator's term. They have an opportunity to change commissioners. If you can remember when I first came on in twenty-seventeen, that then administrator opted to just shut down a number of the commissions. And I believe that if that was okay for that previous administrator, I should exercise and be afforded the same right. If I find that there are commissioners and head of commissions or advisory committees that are not sharing the same vision as this administration, I do and will exercise the authority to replace them. I hope that answers you. Know that for the finance position, the public works position, and the administrat, administration position, when position to be hired was presented back in May, I shared that whole process of how we would handle department heads in terms of having an evaluation team with them making recommendations to this mayor and then this mayor would interview those recommended and I would make the determination and decision. I would then bring it to our trustees in executive session for them to assist with making that determination. That is a process that was presented back in May and it is unchanged. In terms of the salaries, know that before us, we'll be presented tonight approval of a budget that have the positions that you referenced in them. So that salary is included in the budget and it takes into consideration the final, final count for each department's budget. Let's move forward, sir.
Good evening. This is Larry Gates.
She said, hold on.
Hi, I'm Larry Gates. I'm Public Works Director, Salt Village. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address the board. I'm here today respectfully to request reinstatement of my position as Public Works Director with full pay for the time I was placed on unpaid leave. My, my layoff was unwarranted. It was not based on performance, misconduct, or any legitimate reason. I was never provided with a written explanation for being placed on unpaid leave. Instead, my leave was an act of retaliation and malice because I terminated a temporary employee who committed serious violations. The case of the conflict. The temporary employee engaged in unsafe lagging practices, lagging from inside a vehicle causing an accident, time theft. The temporary employee was found to be stealing time, low productivity that impacted the department also. The underlying issue is nepotism and retaliation. The temporary employee happened to be the spouse of a trustee and a friend of the mayor. After I made the decision to turn the temp, the mayor expressed anger and I was informed by the VA that the mayor said since I turned the temp worker, I was also to be fired. This clearly, clearly demonstrates retaliation, favoritism, and conflict of interest and not sound leadership or fair governance. My contribution in record to the village, during my tenure as Public Works Director, I have led initiatives to improve safety protocols for staff and residents. I improved cleanliness and quality of the village infrastructure. I also.
One minute.
One minute. My concerns is this act was taken without due process and without adherence of policy. It undermined, it undermines the nepotism clause in our own handbook. It exposes the village to legal ramifications for wrongful retaliation and adverse employment act. My request, my request is I respect, I respectfully request the board to reinstate my position as a Public Works Director. Thank you, guys, I hope you guys can address it.
Thank you, sir. Next.
It's Mayor and all the trustees. What I'm about to say here today.
Please say your name.
Ernestine Blacken, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
What I'm about to say here today is no disrespect, but I just want to let you guys know that when we come here to these village meetings, we are coming here for business and we are tired of all of this argument. What was on the agenda a couple of months ago, the grocery store? No one has said anything about those things. I am tired of these leaders who is not standing in their position and leading this village like they supposed to do. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Know that though, we are actively working towards a grocery store.
Sorry, can I talk to you?
Yes, I'd like to answer immediately after rather than go to the end. We are still working on the grocery store. Thank you.
David Fields, good evening, Madam Mayor and Board of Trustees. I too am concerned about the parties that's going, that's being called here in this village. I've heard a three-day event that's going to take place here in July. I've heard about the various activities, parties that's going to be staged here, but I've yet to hear anything about this grocery store again. One of the things that I believe our mayor ran on, on her campaign was the grocery store.
That's it.
And yet, and yet, knowing that this is what the residents have been actioning for is a grocery store, excuse me, is a grocery store. And now, you don't hear any talk about a grocery store here. Everything that's being talked about is something totally different. And it's not being talked about for the residents. Everything that's being talked about is this party theme. That's what it has turned to, a party village? Where are we going? The question was asked a while back, Madam Mayor, what are you up to? And every time we turn around, we're seeing more and more of what it is that you're up to. And I just feel that you're the mayor here. You're supposed to be the leader here, but the leadership is far short of the ship. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Sir, before you sit down, if you've not received or did not pick up two flyers on the back table, I'm going to respectfully ask that you pick them up now because you keep alluding to parties and I would like for you to acknowledge the legal defense workshop that's planned for next Monday. I would like for you to acknowledge another community event scheduled for October the fourth. Both of those documents are on the back table. The community service that we're offering is, um, recycling for our residents and everything. So everything is not about a party, but then I was told it's not called a party, it's called a festival. The thing is, sir, we have been providing some of the same events that's been previously orchestrated. The only difference is now we're making some of them culturally appropriate so that we reach all of our residents so that they feel included in our village. Know that, as I said to the recent, um, commenter, we are still working on the grocery store. If you can remember, everyone that came before us before, those that were asking us to give them our land so that they can unilaterally make a decision what grocery store they would want us to have. They each basically mentioned the concept would take three to five years. We do not plan for it to take three to five years, but I guarantee you it's going to take more than five months. Thank you, sir.
One second.
David Smith, resident. First question, I just noticed something. Why is it that the last two accounts payable, uh, corporate council hasn't been listed? Been at least maybe three, if not four, accounts payable in the roll that they haven't been listed on accounts payable? I'm just going to assume they're not doing pro bono work. So my first question is, why are they not building the village? And if they are building the village, why should they not pay the accounts payable? Because I'm concerned with all of the litigation that we sit back and wait for you guys to come back from discussing during the executive session and all of the other court affairs that the village has right now. That tab, by the time it does get built, it's going to be extremely tight. So I'm wondering why we're not getting it in increments instead of once it gets to a point to where our general fund is going to be possibly incapable of handling. Second question, with tonight's budget, because I finally had a chance to look it over, uh, I saw a one-point-two-five million dollar transfer from Amalgamated in order to kind of balance that one-point-six million dollar deficit. And I reviewed the footage and our interim village administrator said that that was going to come from an expiring TIF. And one, I want to know if that's true? And two, I want to know if, are you on board with that? Do you feel as though that that is the thing to do? I just want that on record. If you, Madam Mayor, and the village interim administrator are okay with transferring $1.25 million from an expiring TIF? And if you know the ramifications of that? Finally, regarding the water bill, because I saw the news last week. What is the process of going back three months to find out if somebody overpaid? Because I don't believe it's possible. How do you go back and check accurate data and see if it's accurate? If you have a water meter reading from three months ago, even from a month ago, how do you go back and verify whether or not the meter reading was correct? I don't feel as though the message is coming out properly because I don't see how you're going to accurately give out any sort of a credit for an overpayment unless you just, basically just waive people's overdue water bills. So what's the process for that? Because I don't feel as though the proper message is being put out. And those are my questions.
Thank you, sir. Let's move on to number five, we're looking at ordinances and resolutions. You're absolutely right, I did not. Moving on to number five, we're looking at ordinances and resolutions. May I have a motion to approve ordinance authorizing expenditure pending passage of annual appropriations? May I have that motion? It's been moved by trustee Sack. May I have a second?
Second?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear any. Thank you. It's been moved by trustee Sack, seconded by trustee Burns to authorize expenditure pending passage of annual appropriations ordinance. May I have a please call the roll?
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Jones? Trustee Sack? Trustee Stern?
No.
Trustee Winston?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. The motion to accept an ordinance authorizing expenditure pending passage of the annual appropriations ordinance has been approved by a vote of four to three. That motion carries. Moving on to new business. And we're talking about financial matters. And I'm asking for a motion, oh, I can't see for some reason. I'm asking for a motion to approve transfers, payroll, and accounts payable distributions in the combined amount of $466,870.50. I'm sorry, let me start over. I'm asking for a motion to approve transfers, payroll, and accounts payable distribution in the combined amount of $468,256.56. May I have that? I'm sorry, you made that motion? Thank you. I need a second. You need a second? We have a motion and a second only for any discussion. Madam Card, please call the roll.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Sack? Trustee Stern?
Yes.
Trustee Winston?
Yes.
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you very much. We're moving on to reports of officers. The first report will be the mayor's report. And I have a few things that I would like to say. Trustees, please acknowledge that IML reporting out will be due at the next meeting, at the next board meeting, that would be an opportunity to provide your reports. And we're asking that when you give your report, which would come under the Board of Trustees' comments, that you share with us documentation, if at all possible, and what you took away from attending some of the sessions at IML. I have a question.
Documentations, can you clarify what documentation are you talking about?
Well, in most instances, once, if you downloaded the app and/or attended sessions, in a very few sessions, they gave you handouts. But in almost every instance, if you had downloaded the app, it gave you underneath the documents that they were presenting on, usually in a PDF format. You can click on that and make a copy and share it with your colleagues as you're talking about the saving points from the session that you attended.
Can we just do that in the first, well, first the cover page? Speak up. You want the cover? Can we do the cover? Because I had several sessions, so I'm like, can I do my cover page? Or are we talking about the full PDFs that we got?
The thing is, if you just do the cover page and if they did not attend the session, they've not learned from your learning. And that's what the desire is, that even though everyone did not attend the same sessions, they can benefit from the sessions that you attended. So choose one or two. And if you need assistance with making copies, let us know. And I'll be certain we can make those copies for you. But share with us the document. As well, know that your expense report must be turned in within two weeks after the conclusion of IML conference. And so those reports are to be turned in directly to me. If you did not use all of that whopping $500 advancement, then you would return those funds when you turn your expense report to me. Are there any questions there? I wanted to share something with you. I'm going to ask, one, two, three. My next topic is looking at legal fees. We're looking at legal fees, and as of the statement date, which is September 22nd, which is yesterday, as you can see, we owe our attorneys $17,289.99. Generally, you do not see a copy of this invoice, just like you don't see individual- I made an error. Typically, you do not see invoices in hand. If you want to refer to invoices, you typically go to the accounts payable who has the invoices attached to the request for payment. Okay? This amount, $17,289.99, is one of our ones. We do not put in the budget to handle these type of expenses. I want you, though, also, as you peruse, as I'm still talking, to look at some of the tasks that our corporate authorities are being tasked with. And you hopefully, you will agree that some of these charges, they can't help it. If we're calling them on these matters and/or even down to them having to read an email from us and respond to emails, we get charged for all of them. And I am going to just make up an appeal to you to, give me a minute, I see. To give me, I mean, just to look at and focus on some of the items that they're being asked to do for us and see how we can limit it. We cannot continue to pay $17,000 in legal fees. It's just not in the budget. And I'm going to leave that there. I sent out information on strong cities prevention training to all of the trustees this morning. That does not mean that you're expected to sign up. It's on, I'm, you're not expected to sign on and sign up for all of those ongoing training sessions. You can sign up for those that you think you may be interested in and/or you cannot sign up if you're not interested in any of them. But to commit, to register does not mean that you have intentions of attending all of them. I like to present to you opportunities as they come to me. Yes, it came late because the very first one is within the next couple of days. However, I sent it within a half an hour of the time that I received it this morning. So sometimes you just have to be flexible and decide what's good for us, what's not good for us, and how we're going to associate with that. I wanted to share that. I have something else, and this is an extended draft. And, uh-oh. Now, I don't have a copy of that. Oh, yes, I do. Here are the four that's coming down to my right. These are, most of these are definite dates. Some of them are tentative and based on follow-up requests that I've made. But I thought that it would be good to let our residents know exactly activities that's planned. And for those of you who think that we're only doing partying, I would like to draw your attention. The very first one, 9/29, is Free Legal Clinic, right here in the rotunda. That flyer is on the back. The one for 10/4, Community Service Day, the recycling event. That document is on the back table as well. 10/31, that is a Halloween event that has always taken place. However, when I saw the flyer today, I've asked that planner to meet back with me so that we can look at how it's going to be presented. We always do a Veterans Day celebration, and we do that on what day? 11/11. That's Veterans Day, no difference. 11/22, we've always, I see you, trustee. 11/22, we have been doing a senior, a senior brunch for at least the last four years. The only thing that's different about it this time is we are definitely reaching out to our veterans as well. No difference. It's not a party. It is an opportunity to assist some of our seniors and our vets who do not have families to nor, that they would normally spend Thanksgiving with. So it's to give them an opportunity to enjoy Thanksgiving celebration. 12/6, we've always done Santa parade and tree lighting ceremony. That's no difference. On 12/20, we're doing holiday cheer food baskets, and I'm going to start my day now by asking all of our residents and our trustees to start donating the bread with hand goods so that, and/or turkeys and hams so that we can present at least 150 of our residents with a holiday cheer basket for them to prepare themselves at home. I've heard that we wanted to do a holiday celebration. Know that I do not say Christmas because all of our residents do not celebrate Christmas. However, they enjoy the holiday period. So I've not gotten any information on that. However, also keep in mind, events that are listed, if you look, trustees, at the bottom of all of them, it says, "Event hosted by the mayor's office and the trustees." I would hope that everything that's on this document, that's not being planned already, that it includes the mayor's office and all of the trustees and not just a select few trustees. The things that we host, that we will pay for from the village, will be sponsored by the village and not individual trustees. That doesn't mean that individual trustees cannot plan any events. But you cannot plan your own individual events and use village dollars. Hopefully, you understand that. I also ask that we refer to individual flyers for greater detail on each of those events. The first two events coming up, the flyers are on the back table already. That has the details. You can look forward to the other details to be forthcoming later. I'm sorry, trustee Johnson, you had your hand raised.
Yes, I had a concern about the 10/31 for the Halloween event. Usually, the village does a trunk-a-treat, and it's never on Halloween. I'm the only trustee that throws a Halloween event for the children on the day of Halloween because I don't want them out there trick-or-treating, going door-to-door. So I don't understand, how can you say that the village has an event for Halloween?
Let me share-
So that is the trunk-a-treat, right? That you're talking about?
Okay, let me answer your question because I got the gist of your question. You know, we have two other entities that serve the village of South Village. We have the library district as well as the school. In the past, we had three trunk-a-treats. We had at least two Easter egg hunts. And residents would run from one entity to the next. The directors of the other entities, director and superintendent, the three of us, we discussed it. It makes sense for us, who serve a community as small as ours, to collaborate and support one another at events. And so, the library decided that they really, really do a wonderful job with trunk-a-treat. So they will be hosting trunk-a-treat opposed to the library doing trunk-a-treat. And then, on the exact same Saturday, they run from the library over to our parking lot to celebrate another trunk-a-treat. What we will be asking is that all of the trustees who would normally participate in trunk-a-treat will all take your carts and your trunks and your decorations and hopefully your real good candy over to the library, lift that trunk up, decorate just as you normally do, and the village will be hosting a trunk-a-treat. It's not about one entity and another. We are partners. And we have to show a united faith front whether we are different taxing bodies and/or if we're different trustees. It makes sense to me. Okay?
So are you explaining to me that the Halloween event will be trunk-a-treat? Or will it be an event? That's what I need to know. Because I've already planned for my Halloween dance party that I have for two years straight, and I don't use taxpayers' money.
And, you know, trustee, when you first asked me that, I responded, "Of course, you can use the gym." Then, when I saw the flyer that listed in the- Then when I saw the flyer that listed end-of-village trustees, but not the trustees, I mentioned my concern, and I asked that we talk about it. And I don't think that that talk should-
Same trustees were sitting on my committee for the Public Service Committee, no different. They're just trustees now. It's no different.
It wasn't listed on the flyer, but I'm not going to go back and forth with you because I asked to speak with you offline about this. And so, when we're ready-
Not when I'm ready because the clerk is playing his song like, "I'm a rapper."
When, okay, it's on the record.
I don't see the issue.
But we will talk-
I just asked to use the gym. That was it for the thirty-first. I don't think I'm asking too much.
We will, and you know what? And we're going to talk about that, and I just ask that you be respectful that I'm asking that we communicate.
He had snatched my event off that I do for the children.
I didn't snatch it off, it's here.
And it's wrong because you know that I do the event for Halloween for the children.
No, I never knew that you did it personally. And don't start banging on the table. Okay, I'll check it out. I'll do the check.
I will fight for it. I was looking for South Village for Halloween.
Fight and do whatever you want. Thank you very much. Let me finish my report, please. Let's show some respect.
You too.
Thank you. Let's talk about the corn and dog roast and the music festival. It wasn't a party, it was a music festival. I will be presenting to the board the entire financial accounting for that event. I did not have time to pull it together when you consider that most of last week we were down at the IML conference. So, I will, by the next time we come together, give you the financial report for both of those events. I will be sharing all of the contributions that we received as well as a copy of all of the receipts for monies spent along with invoices. This is something that you're not, you normally do not get, but for the sake of transparency, I will be providing that. And all I can say is, corn and dog roast was, I can't say that it was a roaring success, but it was very, very nice. It was a very nice event. We had a couple of little extra touches that didn't occur before. And those of you who did not come, because it was not all a children's event, but our kids, as I mentioned last time, they had a ball. And I'm certain that they all slept well because we kept them busy, occupied, but they were moving and running around like energizing bodies. But it was good, but expect the financials from you coming soon. That concludes my report. I'm going to move on to the village clerk, Debbie Wagers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say that we do have a soft talk this month. Unfortunately, the copy machine wasn't cooperating with me today, so I couldn't make the copies. But I just want you to know that we have lots of great information that I'd like to share with the residents. If you want a copy emailed to you, you can send a request to DWilliams@softvillage.org, and I will make sure that you get a copy. Communication is one of the worst problems in South Village, is communicating with our residents, and the soft talk is one of the ways that we try to communicate. This will be on the website, hopefully by the end of the week. But we had some very good information in the soft talk. And so far as the hydrant program that's going on and the map of where the hydrants are going. This is information that all residents should be informed of, and I'm glad that we were able to get it in the soft talk. And also, we have the welcome to Chief Sanders and Chief Down, and welcome to our new trustee. We have a lot of information from the library about the different events that they're doing because they stay extremely busy in trying to keep our seniors and our youth busy. And the senior committee will be reporting on what they're doing. But in pointing out what was just discussed about the trunk or treat, the library doesn't do a trunk or treat, it does a trick or treat. And the reason why is because our parking lot, I say our because I used to be on the court. The parking lot is so small, so what we do is we do the trick or treat inside, and everybody is assigned a table that you can decorate, and you can, you know, wear costumes and pass off candy. And outside is used for those who want to do the trunk or treat. If the police and fire come, they have plenty of room to pass off candy. So, yes, we have incorporated the library and the village in this event because we get a lot of people that run through the library. I have flyers here in both English and Spanish for to share if anybody wants one. But that is going to be on Saturday, October twenty-fifth, from eleven AM to two PM, and it is held inside. Also, this weekend, we have the Family Gospel Joy Fest. Crossroads Church is combining with the Hispanic Church that also works out of Crossroads, and then we have another church that meets at Crossroads. We have a Family Gospel Joy Fest which was very well attended last year, and that is going to be from eleven AM to two PM. There's a service for the first forty-five minutes, and the other two hours and fifteen minutes is carnival games and all kinds of fun. So I'm inviting everyone, all staff, all members of the community, outside the community. This is really a great event. It's all free, and we'd like to see you attend this Sunday from eleven to two. That's all I have, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Andrew George Administrator, thank you, thank you. Thank you for letting me to the mic. Whatever then you have it.
Thank you, Mayor. Board trustees and residents. First, I want to congratulate the board for passing the FY twenty-six appropriation. I know that was a task, but congratulations for allowing the department heads to move forward and get their respective departments in order. The other thing I want to discuss, actually tied into the budget. I mentioned before that the Cook County is having their property taxes.
Say what?
They are behind on their property taxes as far as sending out notice to the residents, which means we as a municipality would be delayed in getting our property taxes. So I just want to make the board and everybody aware of that. As I mentioned several months ago, when the proposal was to reject the line of credit, this is one of the reasons we should have had the line of credit. But needless to say, it is what it is, however, a good and a bad. Because Cook County is delayed in getting out the tax notice, they are getting municipality the opportunity to get a low-interest loan. Unfortunately, South Village is not qualified for that because one of the requirements is to be current on your audit. And as you guys know, we are behind four years on audit. So I'm putting this as a forewarning to the trustees, to the mayor, to the residents that as time is tight in the next few months, actions, votes has consequences. So we, more than likely, December and January, we'll be in a dilemma. So I just wanted you guys to know, property taxes will be delayed. The remedy for that, we are not privy to it because of no audits. But that concludes my report.
Thank you. Community Development Director, Yoda Fernandez.
Hello, everyone, trustees, Madam Mayor, clerk. My report for the period of August first-
Can you hold the mic to the now?
My report for the period of August first through September first, the Community Development Department generated over sixty-five thousand in revenue from building permits, inspections, and business license. During this same period, the department completed approximately eighty inspections related to property purchases, sales, rentals, and businesses, some of which have resulted in fines up to seven hundred and fifty dollars. Again, we started issuing citations, and please maintain your lawn's property maintenance also to evade those citations. Additionally, the department, once again going through boxes, has uncovered checks dating back to twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-three. We are actively investigating these checks that could be reissued. Also, I wanted to say that we've been doing, excuse me. We've been doing the renewal of our business licensing, and as we go to these businesses, we have one business that has not paid a business license since twenty eighteen and have been doing and having a business that long, which he would have committed to been closed down immediately. But we gave him an opportunity. It's not his fault that they let him go so far. We have other businesses, which is, you know, a lot bigger, two, four years. I mean, that really concerns me because what have they been doing all this time in our department? That we have to come in, I mean, twenty eighteen? Really, I mean, this is, this is pretty bad. And now we have to be able to make, you know, because he's got to pay for his license for all those years. Can he afford it? I don't know. But we, as the director, we're going to work with them for court compliance. I told them I'm not going to shut them down, which would have been legally number one to do so. But it's not his fault that they let him do it. That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. There's a question on the floor, trustees.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
In reference to the food trucks that's popping up throughout the village, what are you doing about that?
We sent out a belief, this weekend, Paul Inspector Myers went out and closed them down. Because they don't have, they said they were working for the business next door, ten-dollar holler, which is totally separate from, he has a mortar property, you know, business, and this is a trailer. So no, we shut them down.
Trustee Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening.
Good evening, trustee.
Now, there is a, I don't know, a winter bagel, a RV, a giant RV, blue and white, is sitting right over by tornado. That's a lot of trash. I'm not sure if that's a junk vehicle or what, I'm not sure what that is, but I want to report that.
We took care of it. We called the police department, they went out and ticketed.
Okay.
Okay.
The other thing, there's a sign, something about the bodega. You have tornadoes directly across. There's a big sign saying a bodega is coming, is-
No, it's, they changed the name. So we're going to, they're going to take, they're giving the permits. It was under tornadoes, I guess, last year or something like that. And they changed their DBA doing business as, Boosie Bodegas.
So they're going to change all their stuff?
They're going to change all that, but they need permits to do so back. So they cannot just take it until they come in. And you are.
Hold on one question.
Yes, ma'am?
Is tornado and grocery store, combo liquor store, or is it just liquor store?
I have no idea what they came in last year as.
I can say that they do not have a liquor license, so they shouldn't-
No, they do. That tornado over there, that's on Lincoln Highway. That's the different, that's the gas station. No, they don't have a liquor license. What we're talking about is the one, Suri, yeah. Yeah, they do have, yeah. That, I believe that liquor store came in last year. So I don't know what they came in.
I am-
But they do have a grocery inside also.
I'm going to say this. That department is working incredibly. They are uncovering so much lack, as she said, since two thousand eighteen. And people, they take a lot from these businesses and these houses and these contractors when they go in and shut them down because they don't have the appropriate licensing. They've catch a lot of heck. But we have to make certain that these contractors and people who buy homes from folks, that these homes are suitable for new residents to reside in. They have to be kept up to standards, and if not, we have to close them down. That's what that department does, and we thank you for all that you've extended. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on, we're getting comments from the board of trustees. Trustee Barnes?
No comment at this time, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Johnson.
My only announcement is that the Halloween dance party will be held right now in the gym until further notice from four to nine. I'm asking for donations of candy only for, you can give it to me, trustee Sterling or trustee Jones. That concludes my report.
Trustee Jones? At the next, yes. Are you going to say it today?
Yeah, I still want to say it.
Go ahead, copy, right here.
Those very important things. I will have, I will have a report for it next week. I will watch this next week. But that's all. We can wait.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes?
Well, they do those reports, and you're asking, I also have a written copy.
Yes. Well, that's why I asked for documentation. By documentation, that means video.
She deserves it.
Trustee Sat?
No comments.
Thank you. Trustee Sterling?
I also have my report ready, but I'll have it in detail next, next quarter.
I truly appreciate you ladies for being so ambitious, okay? We will do it the next time because we have a whole nother meeting yet to go, okay? So please bear with us. Trustee Winston?
Yes, I too was ready to proceed with my IML report. One of the residents spoke about the grocery, and during the IML, I was fortunate enough to attend a session where I had a grocery linkage analysis report ran so that as we speak with economic developers, we are able to speak on the language that they are asking us in regards to our village. Also, in connecting with all these to get their exact requirements that's needed to entertain possibly coming to the village. So once I get the analysis report, then we're able to sit and discuss and look at that. Also, but I'll have the report also so that the residents can have a copy of it as well.
Thank you very much. Number eleven, comments of the commissioners. The first one, Senior Advisory Committee Chairperson Carol Coleman.
Good evening. Mayor and trustees and residents.
Can you talk until the mic?
Good evening.
Much better, thank you.
All right. Upcoming event for the senior advisory board will be this Saturday. We will have our senior barbecue. It will be from twelve to four PM in the park, and it's free. We're asking that residents come that are fifty and older, all food and parking. Everything is free, and it is being sponsored by the Eastern Stars and the Masons. So that's what's coming up this month. And next month, tentatively, we will have a sneakers fall for all seniors. So that concludes my report. And you know, our, our annual, our annual meetings, which are breakfast bingo, I have to say, breakfast bingo, game night. Those are still going on, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is it possible that you can send me a copy by email? The flyer for barbecue is coming weekend, or the girls' sneakers fall? They are not parties, they're events. So if you could share with-
The clerk has.
Can you email them to me? Thank you very much. So then I can share it on the e-news page. I appreciate your sending them to me. Five, there's a question.
What do you have, your senior meetings? Do you have one from senior meetings?
Yes, we do. We have them every- We have them every second Thursday.
What time?
5:00 p.m. in the senior building.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Excuse me, I do have a question. There's another question, Burns.
Chairman Coleman. A lot of times, we get information at the last minute. Do you have the emails for all of the trustees?
No, I usually give, they're up on the boards, they're on our windows, and I give a copy to clerk Debbie Williams.
Okay. I am requesting, if the clerk have these events in a timely manner, can you please email them to the trustees? Because I get so much the day of, the night before, or the morning of. So if you do have those documents, please forward them to the trustees. Thank you so much.
And Chairperson Coleman sent us the annual SOC talk.
Right. They're in SOC talk, and they are outside the doors. We always put up a lock.
Thank you. Fire and Police Commission Chairperson Francine Anderson.
The Police and Fire Commission report consists of, we have completed the interviews for the fire department, and we are getting those numbers from vendors, so we should be able to post a listing before the end of this week. And that should end my board of trustees' report.
Question.
Ms. Anderson, what date do you meet with your committee?
It's scheduled for October 16th, and we will welcome all of you, so that we can know your vision.
Is it a set date for your meeting, or you?
We meet quarterly.
Quarterly.
And we meet on usually the third Thursday of that month.
And the location of where you meet?
What time?
Thank you.
Thank you. I have no general comments, so I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So low.
May I have a second?
Second.
Who seconded it?
Trustee Sacks.
Thank you, it's been moved by trustee Johnson, seconded by trustee Sacks. May we adjourn by common consent? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to ask, and I'm going to ask for a five-minute recess. Those of you who are, I didn't come for your report. Did you have a report? I'm sorry? Didn't you give her a report? Absolutely. Yet you traveled, why didn't you stop me?
You have an attitude today.
No, I wouldn't do that to you. Your information is very vital.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Clerk, and Board of Trustees. Two active projects, one project that's going to be coming up. The first is the Merrill Avenue water main replacement between 221st Street and Strasburg. I'm happy to report that all the main has been installed. It has been pressure tested and just passed coronation test this past week. And so the next step will be for the contractor to begin making, or constructing the service, the individual residential service lines. Those, the new main will not be put into service until the old main is ready to be, until all the service connections have been made. And at that point in time, the old main, or the new main will be put into service and the old main taken offline. So things are moving very quickly there. We anticipate construction, the official end date is December 12th, but they're moving so quickly, I think it'll be well before that. Then I wanted to tell everyone about the fire hydrant replacement project. As the clerk stated, there was information in SOC Talk. There's also information that was posted on the Facebook page. They started work last week. They had pull off to do some more investigation, but they will be back tomorrow. Door hangers are placed on affected residents. And just to let everybody know, this project will require water main shutdowns so that they can isolate the existing hydrants, remove them from service, and install the new hydrants. But the village is going to be committed to working closely with the contractor and the county to make sure that residents are minimally affected. And so that is, like I said, starting tomorrow. We expect it'll take a lot of months to complete the project. And then the other project that is not starting yet, but it will be starting up in mid-October, will be the sidewalk replacement project, which is also in conjunction with Cook County. That is going to be the replacement of sidewalk that needs, that is not meeting ADA standards on Galen Avenue and Cynthia Avenue between 215th Place and 217th Place, and then the sections of 217th and 218th between Cynthia and Clyde. Like I said, that project is not going to be starting for about another three to four weeks, but we will be notifying residents, affected residents, ahead of time with flyers, and also providing information for the SOC Talk, and for the village to be able to present on their Facebook page as well. And that concludes my report.
Yes, I was getting ready to ask everyone to please provide a written report to trustee, to the village clerk by 10:00 on Friday, preceding the meeting for which you will be attending and reporting. 10:00 on Friday, okay? Thank you very much. Thank you for that report. Just so that residents would know and can see by listening to some of these reports. Oops, I didn't do, you did. I missed both of the chiefs, and they just sit here and look at me just as. I'm sorry. Chief, Chief Dom, can you give us a report?
Good evening, Mayor, trustees. Month to date for the month of September, we ran 130 fire calls. Seventy-seven percent of those were EMS calls. We ran five fire calls, 100 EMS, two motor vehicle crashes, two gas leaks, two service calls, seven canceled alarms, and 11 fire alarms. Again, seventy-seven percent of that is EMS, which accounts pretty typically for EMS runs on a monthly basis. Looking forward to the Fire and Police Commission completing their list, so we can replace the four firefighters that we are short. And I appreciate you bringing me this flyer for the Black Fire Brigade. I have reached out to them, and I'm going to work with them to have their EMT and paramedic students do ride along with us, so that we can get prospective hires from the Black Fire Brigade. So thank you, I appreciate that.
You're more than welcome, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and trustees, residents. Basically, I'm still doing my assessment, I'm be brief. The typical reports, basically, we had 611 calls, nine resulting in arrests. We had a tremendous amount of domestic, domestic calls or whatever. The other thing is, I'm looking at, we talked about trick or treat. I'm trying to see if we actually have trick or treat hours. If it is, I would like to put something out. Usually traditionally it goes from 3:00 to 7:00. We could get, I could probably get a flyer to you, we could put out, and if it refers to your event, I can assist however you need me to assist or whatever. This will be my first Halloween here, I'm looking to do what I can to make it successful. That's it.
Thank you. A question.
Chief Sanders. If at all possible, when you give the report for the number of calls, can you give, provide a breakdown for 200 calls for domestic, 100 calls for simple batteries, so that I'm able to keep track and analyze?
Absolutely. Basically, when I give it to you, it's basically a spreadsheet, we pull off a spreadsheet, and I was just reviewing it, because I have to put it, reduce, put the writing or whatever. And it also have, it gets separate, which will entail the actual arrest, and arrest for what? So yeah, it'll be in that.
Thank you. Okay. I just have to say for the record, and then we will adjourn, for real, for real. Listen to the report about the property. I'm certain that you can see that we are being very effective with this administration. We are making strides, we are improving service, we are doing infrastructure work, we are replacing fire hydrants, water main. I know we have a lot of water main breaks, but we are repairing, not repairing, we are replacing water mains. One of the, when is the last time we actually replaced a whole water main? This is new for us. And at some point in time, all I can do is to appeal to our residents to understand and see the strides and the improvements that are being made, and just keep working with us. We have a long way to go. We're into our five-month mark already, but we are producing. Appreciate that, and not keep finding only fault in what's not being done. Everything cannot be done overnight, but what can be, we are working on it. And we are being effective. And with that, may I have approval to adjourn this meeting by common consent?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm going to keep that same motion that was moved and seconded. The vote never took place totally because of lack of response, so that motion was still on the floor. But can we, before I ask for five minutes, now I'm asking for three. See you back here in a second.